Okay, we have our item eighteen, review of costs associated with expansion to a full career fire department. Chief Wigman.
Want me to start?
I, it doesn't.
So at your April twenty eighth meeting, Chief Wigman provided an overview and an update on the need to expand the fire department. He referenced the proposal for career staffing, which is again included in your packet. This was also presented at the Public Safety Committee in May. And finance staff prepared an estimate of the cost for this expansion using Chief Wigman's staffing recommendations of six firefighters on a squad and the terms of the current collective bargaining agreement. Benefit costs were calculated based on current premiums, projected premium increases, and for health insurance, an equal mix of participant classifications, meaning so many would be solely the employees, so many would be employee and spouse, and so many would be family. Based on the numbers provided in our current assessed valuation, we've calculated what kind of additional revenue we would need to fund this. Bill is here tonight to talk to you about the logistics and also some information that he's gathered as a result of really doing a deep dive into our volunteer situation, our response times. One of the things that the chief talked to me about and that really sort of resonated with me is that a resident of Montgomery Township should not have to be expecting one level of service Monday through Friday when our career staff are in place, but a different level of service and response time on weekends when the volunteers are taking this on. And the nature of so many things, it's sort of a perfect storm. We've spread out, so not everybody in Montgomery Township has lived here forever. So some of the older communities who have like fourth generation firefighters, we don't necessarily have that. We have people who are pulled in so many different directions between their careers, their requirements, their obligations with their families, people who are caring for parents now who are aging, so that's another pull on them, children who are in activities. And, and, you know, Bill is just speaking sort of anecdotally, but again, it hit me, you know, to become a firefighter, you need almost two hundred hours of training before you can even go on the truck. So I could do that, or I could perhaps coach my daughter's softball team or soccer team where I just show up on weekends or show up on practices and it doesn't take that inordinate amount of time when I might not already have the bandwidth for something like that. Additionally, we do rely on mutual aid, but there are other communities who are also struggling to get trucks out. So Bill, if you want to share some of your numbers, you know, in terms of the staffing and, you know, the calls and the scratches and the callbacks, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start by saying we have great volunteers. We have volunteers that are really dedicated. And our system, though, is flawed that it's inconsistent with volunteers responding, and therefore it creates a service gap. And that service gap has widened significantly over the last three years. This year, twenty twenty-five, the response time for a volunteer engine to get on scene in Montgomery Township is nine minutes and forty-nine seconds. That's almost a minute past the national recommended standard of nine minutes for a municipality our size. In twenty twenty-three, that arrival time was eight minutes and thirty-six seconds for an engine to get there, not a fire chief, an engine, a suppression vehicle. So in, in a year and a half, we have drastically seen a change in response times. When we have events, when there's training, when people are scheduled to be there, we do really well. Our staffing, when the station is staffed between combination times when the career staff are there and stipend times when people are there overnight, were, you know, four, four minutes and twenty seconds for the career guys to get there and, and really around seven minutes for the stipend shifts to get there. But it's those volunteer times that are significantly impacted by, by the ability to get volunteers out, and that nine minutes, forty-nine seconds response time, I believe, is unacceptable for a municipality of our size with the great people we have and the, and the services we say we provide. Like we, we, we pride ourselves on public safety in Montgomery Township. We have a great police department. When there was an issue with the, the medical service corps, we helped fix it, and now we're one of the greatest ambulance providers in the region. And we need to do the same with fire because we have created a service gap that needs to be addressed. And I don't want to take anything away from volunteers. I started here as a volunteer in two thousand and six. I've been with this company, I'm a life member. But we're just, we're, we're just not providing the service we need to provide. And my fear is that if this trending continues, no matter everything we've done to try to get volunteers from federal grants to tax incentives, to, to uniforms and gear and stipend programs, that that, that service gap is going to continue to get larger and those response times are going to continue to grow. Four minutes in the type of building construction in this town can result in a flashover situation where people could be killed because of the delay in the response. A firefighter's job is already ridiculously dangerous, we know that, you know that, just like a police officer. But now we're, we've created a situation where the type of construction in Montgomery Township, lightweight trust, and the potential for flashover, which means total involvement with, as it, as it continues to grow significantly, doubling in size every thirty seconds, we're also putting our volunteers at greater risk for injury or death because of the allowance of the response times to be around ten minutes. If you ask me, Bill, can you confidential, can you, can you conf, are you confident, let me say it that way, that a fire truck on the weekends is going to show up at my house? If, and the Montgomery Township fire truck is going to show up at my house in Montgomery Township to put our fire out? I can't say that, I can't say that I'm confident in that. I could tell that Lansdale may get here or Colmar, and that's the beauty of the mutual aid system, but at a ten-minute response time, that, that's, that's, I can't confidentially say that we're going to get there. And it's a shame because we have worked so hard to recruit volunteers, but it's just, it's the demographics of the neighborhoods, it's the community that we've built. You know, Vinay and Adam are here as the president of the FDMT and, and the deputy chief of the FDMT, I hope in support of it. But Vinay provided me with a list of our active members so far this year in twenty twenty-five. So as you're aware, activity in the fire service means someone who meets our criteria for the volunteers to be an active member. As of today, for twenty twenty-five, we have ten active members that live, that, that have firefighter one, okay? Ten active members that meet firefighter one. We have twelve active members that meet activity, but those two additional members don't have firefighter one. Of those, of those ten active members, we have a lieutenant who lives in Chalfont, an incident safety officer who just sold his house and moved, a captain that lives in Lansdale, Vinay who lives in Montgomery, another lieutenant who lives in Horsham, a battalion chief that lives in Hilltown, and Adam who lives in Montgomery. So two people are active and live in Montgomery Township and have fire one. The other two members who are active and have firefighter one are life members. So even though I say they're active, their standard for activity is drastically lower because they don't have to meet the same criteria because they've been a member for fifteen or more years. Both of those members average sixty years old. So we, we have changed significantly in the makeup of our fire department over the last twenty-three years. And, you know, I've been here for a lot of it, and I can tell you that we've tried everything to get volunteers, we're still getting volunteers. You probably see on our Facebook page, we just got a great volunteer from our neighborhood, coaches his, his daughters in basketball, went through fire school every Monday, Wednesday, Sunday for six months. He's a firefighter one certified now, and that's great, but he also has commitments where we do not have those people to drop everything they're doing to run to the firehouse anymore. And again, on a Monday night, for drill tonight, we probably have twenty people there, ten, thanks Vinay, that's why I brought you. But, but Vinay and I and Adam have been to drills when there was thirty people there two years ago. It, it's, it's just volunteers are, are decreasing significantly everywhere, but we're feeling the impact here because of the, of the makeup of our community. And, you know, I sit here before you, being the fire, the career fire chief for the last six years, trying to do everything we can to make our combination department work. I mean, we got a safer grant that pay people to come to calls and pay people for training, and we're averaging five people call, and we're paying them to be there. It's, it's just not working. And we have a great career staff, we've spent the last six years changing the mission of the career staff to not just be laissez-faire, let's sit around the table and wait for the alarm to go off. Now you know how assertive our career staff are, how many building inspections we've done. Our ISO rating went from a four to a two, right, ISO, that's incredible for a municipality like us.
What's ISO?
So it's the Insurance Service Office, and they do property, fire property insurance for businesses in town. So because our fire department got an ISO rating of a two, our businesses in town pay a lower fire tax for insurance, fire insurance premium, which is great because we were a four and now we're a two. Which a lot of municipalities, I was with some fire chiefs today that were, they want to get to a two, you know? And, and now we're striving to get to a one, and I don't know if we'll ever get there because there's some things outside our control, but we're going to keep doing it. So we have done things to, to make our, 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 the services we provide better, to make our people better. We're just at a point where I believe we need to, to bring the department to be a full combination department where we have career staff, where we're guaranteeing that the fire truck is going to get to your house in Montgomery Township at an acceptable time for a Montgomery Township resident. I mean, the national standard is nine minutes, we should be there in five, four to five minutes. People shouldn't be waiting for a fire truck to get to their house, especially because their house is on fire, and we know that as fires grow, they double in size every thirty seconds. Like I said, it's potential for a building collapse, a flashover, so we're putting our people in greater danger. And those people who are getting there, ten minutes after dispatch, they're our volunteers. They, they might not have the same amount of training. Our training requirements are the same, but our career staff trained more than our volunteers, it's their, that's their profession, that's what they do. So I think that we need to seriously consider, or you need to seriously consider, as the board, moving forward with, I, I understand it's a tax increase, but we're telling people what the service is, and we've demonstrated that we provide a great service. That there's no doubt that our fire department is a premier fire department, and there's no doubt that we provide more services to our community than our surrounding communities. I mean, we, we really do, I, I, I mean, I just sit back in this meeting and think about how, you know, the, the people presenting tonight said the fire department, you know, the fire, we wanted to meet with the fire department, like, six years ago, nobody cared what we did, you know, we were just the guys up on the hill who ate a lot of food and waited for the emergency. Now we're so assertive and energetic and part of the fabric of the community, and I just feel that, yes, we've done all this stuff, but the response time is tragic for the municipality we live in, and I'm afraid something bad is going to happen. Because that's what we're trending to. And again, in twenty twenty-three, during the volunteer shift, we were at eight minutes and thirty-six seconds to get a fire truck. In twenty twenty-five, we're at nine minutes and forty-nine seconds. And, and this is, it's only half-year statistics, but in twenty twenty-four, we were at nine minutes and twenty-five seconds. So it's not getting better, and we've tried everything. I, I, I promise you, I've tried everything, these guys have tried everything. And the burden of this falls on those two guys right there because they're the two running around on the weekend answering every call. And Carolyn brought up a recall. What that means is somebody from the fire service got there and they determined that the fire truck wasn't needed, so they recalled them. So from a risk management point of view, a recall's a good thing, right? The fire truck didn't hit the road, but from our point of view, what we could say is we're recalling our trucks because we're not getting the truck out. So over that time period, the two and a half years, there were three hundred and six recalls, all right? Two, one hundred and fifty-one of those, three hundred and six, occurred during volunteer hours in Montgomery Township. Ten times we scratched. So if we put that together, that's a hundred and sixty-one calls where a fire truck didn't arrive on scene in Montgomery Township. That's not counting our mutual aid responses, that's just saying during volunteer hours. So yes, sometimes these guys get there and they realize that, hey, we don't need the truck. But I think sometimes, and, you know, it, it's embarrassing to admit, but I, I do it too, like, we have a call on the weekend and I look on the app and see there's not a lot of people there, I get there as fast as I can and recall the assignment, right, so that we're not like, oh, the truck never made it out, you know? So there are some, there are some figures within the statistics that, you know, tell, tell the picture and, and that tell the story. And the story is that our response times are increasing significantly, and our responding personnel are drastically declining in those times where we don't have people in the station.
I think too, part of it falls under, we live in a community that there is a certain amount of affluence, and it, I haven't done a formal study, it's just anecdotal. Those communities that have a strong blue collar presence are more apt to be volunteer firefighters. You start changing income levels, and as I said, all these, you know, people travel for their jobs, you know? They don't live and work in the same community, they have to travel, not just for their normal commute, but, you know, they, they, they're salespeople and they have clients that are out of state. The other thing is the housing prices, which is, is out of our control, but we've had two volunteers who, you know, were looking to go on their own and won it up in Otzville. So kudos to Otzville, you've got a great trained volunteer firefighter, and the one is in Percasie.
We just lost another one to Percasie this week.
So, and, you know, it's, it's sort of a perfect storm, you know, we, we bring, we want young people to come in, they, sometimes they stay here because they're working, sometimes they go away to college, but when they're home on breaks, they're responding to calls, and then they have to make this life decision where they're going to work and where they're going to live, and it's unfortunately not Montgomery Township. I was just up in Franconia the other day and I saw townhomes starting in the high fives. Franconia used to be the stretch where you would go, you know, because you still wanted to be in Montgomery County, and it was affordable up there, you know, single, and you saw, everybody has seen, you know, Freddie Hill, you know, the big debate about do we put a smaller amount of homes in that are a million and a half plus? Or do we put a mixed use of a few hundred homes? But again, affordable has taken a very relative, it's, it's just so like, what I consider affordable as a starter home is not the case anymore, and it's affecting the volunteers. And, you know, on a day, on a Saturday where volunteers are out trying to live their lives, you know, they see maybe, you know, they've, they've already responded to four calls, and some of them were false alarms, but you don't know that when you're getting the call, they're, they go out, by the time the fifth call comes in, they don't go.
Saturday is our worst response time, ten minutes, forty-six seconds on a Saturday, which in the volunteer world is the day we should be getting out because the career staff's not on. So the day, Saturday is ten minutes and forty-six seconds to get a fire truck on scene. Sunday is ten minutes and five seconds.
And even the Commonwealth has recognized in Harrisburg that there's an issue. The Solicitor's Office made us aware of legislation that got passed last year which allowed municipalities to have a higher cap on their village for EMS as well as fire because this is, this is across the Commonwealth. I was on a webinar last week about EMS nationwide where you're sitting at a public meeting and an EMS chief comes in and announces to you, yeah, we're closing because we can't, we can't get trucks out or we're, we don't have enough revenue coming in, and you're just left high and dry. We saw what happened down in Delaware County, two hospitals closed and, you know, EMS, and some are trying to rely on fire, but not all fire are trained to do EMT work. And, and, you know, it's just, there's just this storm in, in emergency services, including police. We've talked about recruitment and the challenges we've had there. But fire scares me because as a municipality, as township of the second class, we are required to provide public works, our infrastructure, our maintenance, public safety, regardless of how we do it as a three-legged stool. So we're fortunate that we have EMS in our community, we have a station right here on our campus. Police, we have, I would say, the best police department in Montgomery County along with our fire department. But this scares me that on a weekend, I'm going to get a phone call that could have been avoided. And yes, it's a tax increase and nobody wants to do it, but I think if you tell residents it's solely for fire, it's a dedicated millet that's going to show up on their tax bill for fire. And they would understand because how many people in a room would say they've ever even considered being a volunteer firefighter? So how do we then put that burden on ten individuals and say, you keep us running on weekends? We solved the problem a number of years ago during the week with career staff. And to Bill's point, that culture wasn't working. It changed dramatically in a short amount of time. Some people left, we got some great people coming in, and now they are viable parts of our community. And Bill and I have also talked that if we do go in this direction, it's possible that to supplement some of this, we make our firefighters available to some communities nearby that don't have the ability to do commercial fire inspections. And then they get billed just like anybody else would get billed to help augment, you know, the cost that we're putting out. Right now during the week, I don't, I hear the, the trucks go by and I, I don't even think twice about it because it seems like no sooner the CAD on my computer drops off that says there's a call and I hear the truck on the street. I think residents have that same expectation for weekends. They want to know that if they call nine-one-one and they need a fire truck, it's going to be there on a timely basis. And nine minutes, you know, to somebody doesn't seem a lot, but does any of us know, even if you've been in a car accident, you know, a couple of minutes seems like, where are they, where are they, why aren't they here, so?
I have some clarifying questions.
Certainly.
Before, when you had mentioned this, that, you know, I guess it was the April meeting, you had quoted nineteen as the number of additional full-time employees as well as one HR intern. The numbers in, in this report seem to be a little different. Can you clarify how many?
It would be, it's nineteen additional staff. The HR intern, she's working for us now. She's, she works half with us and half with Chris, doing kids' youth stuff and interviews and helps Chris with managing HR. She's with the fire department, she's helping, you know, work on possibly redoing our job script, well, she's redoing our job descriptions, looking at if this is approved to move forward, I have a list of tasks we need her to get done. But we're looking at nineteen, so we're looking at having.
And then her position would be done.
Right, her, her position's done. We, we've had really good internships over the last couple of years. We had an emergency management internship, which was Jake Millivoy. We had a finance fire internship that was Kate, and she did a really nice job. So we've been very fortunate that Carolyn has allowed us to, to have interns, and this time it's working out with Chris. But we're looking at having four shifts of six people.
And you should have in your packet as a sheet that says additional staff wages, and it's numbered one through nineteen. So there are nineteen positions, they're just different titles. So there's battalion chiefs, there's captains, there's firefighter one, but that makes up the nineteen.
Okay, and so also, we understand, it just said, it just said in this one paragraph, the department would have to hire fifteen new full-time staff, so that was.
Right, so I put that proposal together before the recent collective bargaining agreement, and that is when we talked about having five people on a shift. But after the CBA was signed, looking at all of the things that were placed in the collective bargaining agreement, I just felt that it would be better for us to ask for six for a shift. So we can, we always want to maintain four people on a fire truck. That is the goal, that is what NFPA says is the goal, two in, two out for OSHA. But also, we need to have an incident commander, so we're talking about five.
In terms of finances, nineteen is the number.
Nineteen is the number, correct.
We're not including the cost for an HR employee?
Correct.
Okay, and this, all these nineteen would be subject to a collective bargaining agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and, you know, you're proposing that we would onboard them all at one time?
Correct.
And why is that?
It's the only way that it can work with the twenty-four-seven shift, the twenty, the twen, so we would have twenty-four seventy-twos. So they would work, which is, which is standard work schedule in the northeast part of the country. But they would work a twenty-four-hour shift, and then they would be off for seventy-two, and then they would come back for another twenty-four-hour shift. Twelves, I don't think are appropriate for firefighters because the, the firefighters that work at night would basically come in and sleep, and that, I don't think we should pay people just to come in and sleep. So with the twenty-fours, their days would be structured so that they would get up and do their operational readiness, go out and do inspections, run training at night. But we, I don't know, with keeping, with keeping four on a truck, one as an incident commander, I don't know how you would successfully implement stages of bringing people in because you wouldn't meet the intention of what, of what we're trying to do. So if we only brought in ten, how would I put, spread them out? Because then I wouldn't be able to get four on a truck.
Well, I mean, but the weekends seem to be the areas where we're having the most difficult, difficulty covering and, and responding promptly, you know, to the calls that are coming in.
Right.
Wouldn't, wouldn't one possible solution, you know, in terms of phasing this over time, be to kind of start with adjusting shifts so that we have the coverage that we need on weekends?
We, we could do that, we could certainly do that, but then you're going to require more overtime, and you're going to require the use of more part-timers. Or if we hire, you know, then we'll have to figure out if they're going to work tens, how we're going to work out schedules and shifts. I, I just, I don't think we'll be as attractive as an employer. That's kind of like what Upper Mor, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but it's kind of like what Upper Morland's doing right now, where they're just trying to fill shifts and, and guys aren't sure when they're working, and they're always paying overtime on Sundays, and, you know, it's, it's, it's just not a good work environment when you have to work so many days in a row because you're covering weekends. We're, we're trying to do this to implement what is best practices in our, in our field.
I just feel as of nineteen new employees is a lot to onboard at one time.
I'm ready.
And that it seems logistically like this is.
We want to onboard all nineteen at once. So the, the way the plan is set up is that in January, we would interview for battalion chiefs and captains. Hopefully get all of those people in by March. So you're looking at four captains and four battalion chiefs, so that's eight. Then it would be the, that leadership team with John Scheider and I to, to build out how we're going to do the onboarding. We would look to test, we already have worked with box and reserve the weekend just to get on there, whether you say yes or no, I'll cancel it, hopefully say yes. But we would bring in those firefighters after a testing period, and then we would run a four-week onboarding daytime program where it would be eight hours on a weekday to get them where they need to be in Montgomery Township. What I would like to do is do an internal hiring first between our part-timers and our volunteers who want to be full-time firefighters, because they already know our culture, they already know what we do, and they already know the municipality. So therefore, yeah, we're, yes, we're onboarding nineteen new people, but between the breakup with the command staff and leadership team and the, the hiring hopefully of, of a good majority of part-timers, which will probably poach from other departments because they want to come here, they want to work here. And our volunteers, several volunteers have reached out, what do I need to do to be a candidate? I think the transition will be a lot easier than bringing in nineteen people off the street because everybody's going to come who applies to this job, it was going to be in the fire service for a while. It's not like police where they finish their act one-twenty and then they just come on board. I mean, our requirements firefighter one and firefighter two alone probably precipitate that this person's been in the fire service for at least a year. So they, they are firefighters.
I, I have no doubt that, you know, they'll be well-trained. And I, you execute incredible plans all the time, and I have great faith in your ability to do so. I think, however, it stresses our, our resources as a township.
Understood.
To add that many new employees at one time in one fell swoop, not to mention the impact that it's going to have on taxes for our community. And a phased approach would give us a little more time to, to ease into this, create less burden on, on our resources internally in terms of both HR and IT. And logistically, you know, then we also have to, we don't have the tie-in facilities to accommodate all of these new people at once. And so then we might have a little more breathing room to get that feasibility study done for the facilities improvements or, you know, get the trailers in place that we might use as temporary.
I think from the building standpoint and from speaking with IT, if, it wouldn't be the best-case scenario, but we could make the current station work. Rich and I have already talked about different things that we could do to give people the space they need. Currently, we, Upper Morland is closing the firehouse, so they gave us free lockers. So we've already talked to Public Works about hanging some more lockers on the wall. So you're right, it wouldn't be the, the, the most conducive environment, but. Con conducive environment, but it it would work. I mean, I've been to Upper Marion, they're in a Cube Smart. A- and and they're working at twenty-four seven plus a medic. Um we and we we already are a step ahead of them as far as facilities are are concerned. I understand the phasing point of view and I I understand your point about phasing it in and it's not a burden. I just think that if the goal is um to put four people on a fire truck. And have an incident commander, which we know firefighters get killed because lack of control, lack of command and lack of accountability. Um that's what kills firefighters. So that incident commander is Kate. I I just don't know. If you were to, if I will, I don't want to, I will do whatever you tell me to do and I will be grateful to take, but I think if we are to do this right. And from the onset and to set the standard and comply with national best practices and standards. And and to ma- ensure that we have the people we need to do the job right, then I don't think I can. When when North Hampton started, they didn't phase in. They were a daytime and went twenty-four seven. When Upper Providence, they did the same thing. So we're not doing anything that the people who have the same kind of demographics that we do have done. Um they've done it the way that I'm proposing to do it and have been successful. Um but you have other municipalities like Norris Town that bring on two a year a and and but they're not getting.
That's not going to help us.
I I I just, I just don't know how it works that way.
So, uh you know, I think a a phased approach gives us better time to to put those plans in place. And including our facilities plans because you have a a robust um you know. Uh ambitious suggestion in terms of the battalion or potentially a, you know, an additional battalion. All of which needs to be thought through and I and you know, you need to add to your team in order to do that and to have all of those minds around the table. I'm not saying. Um you know, I I'm supportive of this move and I I think. We are seeing it across the state, across the country, that more and more departments have to move this direction. We are required by uh the MPC to provide these services. You know, and so if we have to provide these services and and you know, we we can't unfortunately continue to rely on the volunteers. To perform those services. People just aren't volunteering to do it anymore and you've made that case. Um so here we are saying, I I see the writing on the wall here. We're going to have to move in this direction. I just would like to see us take. A you know, a a more cautious approach to this and one that doesn't have um you know, such a a big. Bite at the end of the day uh in into people's uh wallets, you know, initially.
So as far as the feasibility study for the building, you know, we talked about it this afternoon, actually. Um we have three quotes and what we would like to do is we would. Plan to, depending on how this discussion went, put that in next year's budget, do a feasibility study, do all the interviewing we needed to do, visit. You know, fire stations to make sure we were getting what we wanted and then look at possibly bringing it for the board in twenty twenty-seven. Because I'm very cognizant of the fact that when we borrowed the money for the infrastructure and all the capital we needed because. When this board changed, we discovered that we had no capital improvement plan. So we developed a five-year plan. We borrowed fifteen million dollars at under two percent, which you know is amazing now. Um but we then, in the course of going over things, we found out that we constructed a rec center. That had debt that we didn't put a revenue stream in for that and I had to come to the board and explain that, even though it happened well before any of us were here. That that just could not happen. That would be like taking out a second mortgage on your home and not having the additional revenue for it. And the board looked at the numbers and said, yes, we need to do this. So I'm very sensitive about this. Um I. I guess in my mind to do a twenty-four seven, I don't know, other than what Bill said about phasing it with the command staff first. And then the operational side, I don't know how we would phase it um and not be. Not get grieved on the collective bargaining agreement and not have some of the same issues because. People don't have a steady idea of when they're going to work.
Yeah, I think the overtime is going to be a killer factor.
And that's if people take it.
Right.
Uh and the chief, I don't mean to put chief peoples on the spot, but it is a very different demographic. There used to be a time where. People took all the overtime they could get because, you know, police and fire were traditionally paid very poorly. So they needed every hour of overtime now. It's more about work-life balance, work-life integration. People would much rather have the time off to be with their families than take overtime. And I don't want to rely on that and then have to come to you and say, we have a problem, we couldn't get a truck out again because people wouldn't take the overtime shifts.
Right, I mean, we we have the bunk rooms and for four or five on a shift, the bunk rooms can fit those people. Um we have the office space. I was just recommending that if we're going to continue as a true combination department. We have to really give some thought on space for all of us, including the volunteers. But if we needed to make it work now, we absolutely can make it work. We've al- we've always made it and we have two stations. So if it got to the point where like we're too crowded, we have two stations.
If we phase it, does it? Does it improve our response time or we don't have enough for that to happen yet?
So NFPA says for our National Fire Protection Services, for us, we need to be on scene within nine minutes. And have fifteen people on the scene of a fire, alright? Our fifteen people count mutually can count, right? That so so we're, we always will bring in mutually, just like we're always going to go out on mutually. Um to answer your question, i- if we phase it, I don't know if we'll be able to get. The 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 six on the shift, the four on the truck that that I'm proposing here. And again, I it's not Bill's way. This is best practices. This is the work schedule that's been proven to work in the northeast corridor. Other municipalities have done this and have done it well. So, you know, I I understand the phasing part of it, but I also think that. If we're going to do it, we should do it.
But it's a, you know, phasing would just be like a temporary, you know, like so it's our three-year plan to get to the full-time twenty-four seven. Outfit that you have outlined, that's the long-term goal. It's just doing incrementally that makes it a little um less impactful. You know, uh from a financial standpoint and also gives us maybe some more time for the feasibility study to come back. And for us to, you know.
I just hope we still have candidates and that and that's, I mean, that's the other issue that I think I've talked about before. Upper Providence, Warminster, North Hampton, Warrington, Upper Marion. Uh they're all hiring and and we're going to run into the issue that the police, the Newtown. Um and I think more municipalities are going to transition to combination. So I'm just worried three years from now. What the candidate poll is going to look like.
Well, I think that you're a fantastic boss and I know that, you know, people want to work in Montgomery Township. Because we are a really desirable community and we've we've created a great culture in our fire department. Uh so I I would think that people will be as eager to work in Montgomery Township two years from now as next year.
I hope.
You never know. Other people are going to be coming into the marketplace too. So I I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that hold you back from. Trying to think creatively on how we might be able to phase this over two or three years.
If we go with the plan, what what's the perfect world response time? Like, right now, you're at my house in nine minutes forty-nine seconds. I mean, hire all these people, we go with your plan, when are you at my house?
I think if we look at what the career staff gets your house in, four minutes and twenty-five seconds. I mean, Captain Backland has them out the door in sixty seconds. No matter what, they're on that truck and that truck is on three oh nine and sixty seconds. So. I would think at night it'd be delayed. I mean, our stipend program is at your house in seven minutes. I think with the career staff, um they might be out a bit, a little bit quicker. Uh because sometimes stipend people are allowed to come from home as long as they live within four minutes of the firehouse. Um so I think. You know, daytime response, I think the trend has uh at four minutes and twenty-five seconds is a good barometer. And I think at night, we're going to be at your house six minutes. It it, I mean, probably less than that. Um I mean, one of the things that's great about our station is is that the bunk rooms are so close to the engine bay. Uh that guys can and girls can get right out on the trucks, whereas other stations, particularly some of the new ones that I've been to. It takes them forever to get from the bunk room to the fire truck. So that's something that we're going to consider uh if we ever, if we ever have an addition, but. Um I just think right now, ten minutes for the fire truck to get to your house on the weekends is.
Time is what you don't have. We you talked about injury, you talked about death. What you see on the other hand as well is the longer you take to get there, the more of the home or the structure burns. The more property damage, the more insurance. It goes back then to the owner of that building as well. That is dealing with that and I saw my son deal with it a few years ago when his house caught fire and. It's amazing first, the way you guys all work together and pull together to get the job done. I was amazed watching the department in Eagleville like just doing what they needed to do and they had few different. Trucks out there as well. But then afterwards. Fire's out. Now my son's dealing with it. And if they had gotten there sooner, if they had gotten there later, like all of that. Comes into play as well. From what I see on our estimates for taxes and I hate. Hate hate to raise taxes, but when it's something as important as somebody's life and somebody's property, I will consider that. When I see the breakdown of anywhere from, what was it, twenty dollars to forty-two dollars a month? Is what it comes down to on a property. I I here, here, where do I, where do I pay the extra tax? Because if I need you to be there because my house catches fire, I need you there.
I think, I mean, we have a chart, like an average Canterbury house, it's two hundred thirty, two hundred thirty-seven dollars a year. On up to the bigger houses in Wendell Stray at five hundred three dollars a year. I would rather see you implement it the way you want it, not a little bit here, a little bit there. And have one tax increase. I think if we did a three-year, four-year, however, we could. Figure out how to stage it, then we're increasing taxes every year. No one wants a tax increase. No one does. But I think for this. I would hope that people could understand it and grow to figure out how to pay it. I mean. Um rather than, okay, this is what's going to happen this year and then next year and then next year. I I think. Personally, I think it would be easier for people to to have one tax increase and to be able to plan for that. Um rather than, you know, looking at us and hating us for raising taxes every year.
And our fire chief is the expert here. We all have different professions that we are in or have been in that we can. Say, yo, you phased this, you do this. But you're our expert here, like. You're the one who has investigated, you have been doing this. Uh. I see, for me, I see you as the leader and I know you are to the department.
Well, he's the one that doesn't sleep at night thinking about this, like that's.
And he's the one running on the weekends as well, so, yeah.
We have heard though from people who are following this, who are on fixed incomes. A lot of the residents across the street in the Shammany Falls uh who are very concerned about this and then the fact that it's going to have on them. So I I don't think that we can be, you know, callous here and just assume everybody can afford this. And taking some, uh giving some consideration to people who are on fixed incomes, I think is an important part of this deliberation.
You're speaking to someone that's on a fixed income, so I know exactly what you mean and it's not being callous, it's being realistic.
Well, you're not living in a mobile home though and and. You know, a difference.
Well, I would think that everyone over there in the Shammany Falls, yes, many are on a fixed income, but given the fire that they have just seen. And the loss that community has felt, um I I think that people can understand this. No one wants it. I wish we had a better answer and I wish more kids could afford to live here. You know, more young adults who would be our volunteers, but there's not even a starter home under five hundred thousand dollars like. My son was a volunteer. If he still lived here, he wouldn't be able to afford to live here and be on that. I mean. It it's just a different time. One of the things that the board had asked that when we talked about this before was how we would get the word out, how we would explain to people. And Bill and I were talking and, you know, yes, we can always have a a meeting here solely to discuss that, but how many people are really going to come out? So then we were talking about doing a podcast, doing a couple podcasts even to talk about the need and to talk about. How this was discussed, to reference this meeting that if people want to watch the discussion that occurred amongst the board. We didn't come to this with, you know, um just like, oh, well, we'll just raise taxes. Oh, this is just what it is. Um. I just know there are other levels of government that every year, I'm not going to name which one, raise taxes, three percent, five percent. With no reason, just other than they need to make a budget shortfall or because their costs are going up. We're just telling you specifically for fire services, we think now is the time to do it. And that there is a plan and I feel like I have the right person. In charge over there that to make sure that it's successful and that a year from now, we're talking about it. You know, we're saying it was the right thing to do. Um I'm very cognizant of the people in the Shammany Falls, but I also know they take advantage of. The fire services, you know, they, we go over there and we change out their smoke detectors and, you know, calls for service, you know, every month, you know, for falls and things like that. That the fire also respond to. Um and I can't make a judgment about people and where they live and why they live. Um. I don't know that everybody over there feels it the same way with one voice and I would hope that if they listen to us. And heard our explanation, they would understand that it's a necessary evil. But we're also, the board all lives here, they're all going to have to pay it. All the employees who live here are going to have to pay that tax increase as well.
I think that it's altogether realistic to come up with a phased plan that's less of a financial impact on the community. That takes into consideration the needs of people who are on fixed incomes. It still gets you to your your full-time twenty-four seven. I don't think that it's allowed to ask you to go back and revisit the plan. And yes, you are the professional and this is your job. I would just, you know, encourage you to take another look at how we might phase this. Just to um to make it a little less of a financial burden on the community.
I think it'd be nice to put the word out, like you said, to have meetings. Can we have a meeting at the Shammany Falls? That that's what I was. Let's have a meeting.
And maybe at the HOAs as well.
Most vulnerable people can hear why we have to do this and, you know.
If you're talking about having a board meeting at these locations with the majority of.
An informational meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly an informational meeting wouldn't require the legal notices or the public notices because you wouldn't be doing any deliberations. If you're just reporting, you're not going to do any, as long as it doesn't fall into that, but it is something that could just be advertised as a special meeting as well. At a different location. But again, that's assuming that you have a majority of the board there at those particular meetings, but. You you could take the show on the road, if you will, with.
Right, but two of us could come without a forum.
Two, two of you could come without a forum or all five of you could attend as long as you're not. Deliberating and you're not discussing the policies of of what's going to happen.
Yeah, I think we should work on.
I I think that the public needs to have more information. When they don't have information, let's talk the high school renovation that went through. Um they did try to have a lot of public information, but there was a lot of disinformation out there as well and I think that people kind of run with those. Facts or not facts. And I think that people get carried away with, oh, it's going to. You know, unnecessary, they're they're trying to put us through too much with tax increases and so forth. So I want to make sure that we have. Give the information. There can't be questions about what what it is, that that we have transparency. We're giving the information to the to the people and then, you know, put putting it out to them with. As much clarity as we can.
We have members of the public here. We should probably uh ask any of them if they would like to make public comment.
Please do. Everybody that's here, yes, no, phase it in.
Good night.
We want our house, we want you to to get to our house in four minutes or nine minutes.
Almost ten minutes.
Alright, Steve Fideli, E D E L E, the little lady's gone, so I don't think it matters. Throw some numbers around. And um I'm just curious, you were saying nine and a half minutes. It's kind of sample size of.
Um it's, I think it was sixteen hundred fifty-six calls.
Sixteen hundred, so far this year?
No, no, over three, over two and a half years.
So you're nine and a half minutes, you claim that it was worse on Saturday and Sunday.
That's correct, yeah.
And what were those numbers?
That was from three hundred and ninety-eight calls.
But I mean, what was the average call time?
On a Sunday, it was ten minutes and five seconds. On a Saturday, it was ten minutes and forty-six seconds.
That's unacceptable.
Seven minutes because the.
Seven was, seven was stipend.
NFPA is three hundred and twenty seconds.
Well, that's out the door time, that shoot time and response time. I'm talking about on-scene time.
That's from, uh, the nine eleven call to being on the scene.
Right.
They say three hundred and twenty seconds is what this.
Well, that's, so, so there's two, there's two standards, seventeen ten, seventeen twenty, um, and we follow under seventeen twenty.
But we're not even close.
Correct.
The weekend's really bad.
Right.
What, what's the average during the week?
Well, for volunteer hours during the week, it's, uh, ten minutes on a Monday, eleven minutes on a Tuesday, eight minutes on a Wednesday. Nine thirty on a Thursday and eight minutes and forty-two seconds on a Friday.
And with nineteen people added to the staff. That'll bring it down to five minutes?
I hopefully four minutes and twenty-five seconds.
Does that cannibalize the existing volunteers? Is this with the volunteers? It seems like it's on its own without the volunteers at all.
So we are, we. A total. Um, let me unpack that a little bit. Uh, total replacement, no. Uh, supplement, yeah, so you're right, we're not gonna have a need for volunteers. Uh, on that first-out engine, but we are gonna continue to operate as a combination department. And hopefully the volunteers will continue to come out and get the ladder truck out. Um, also. In looking at planning for the career schedule, we're gonna make sure that training is the same time every night, no matter what platoon's on. So that volunteers are gonna be involved. So we, there's, I have no, um. I'm no way cutting out the volunteers. Vinay and Adam are both volunteers. Um, we're just going to add to the staffing and increase the combination staff and then the volunteers will supplement. Right now, it's, the volunteers are supplemented by the career staff. We're gonna swing that pendulum to where. The career staff will be supplemented by the volunteers. So it'll be a true combination department.
Nineteen is the number that gets it done.
For, yes, nineteen is the number that gets it done.
I, I would just think you, you wanna focus on the weekends because it's when the time is bad.
Right, and I, I under, I understand what you're saying, just focusing on the weekends and, and. But we still have to hire staff to do that. They work ten-hour shifts right now. So they're working Monday through Friday, ten-hour shifts, right? So. We would have, we would want six on the weekend, so then you don't, you're not gonna have a shift rotation, you're just gonna fill people in to make it to get their forty hours or whatever it's.
I, I'm not tired of schedules, I'm not certain how that works, but it seems like that's where the need is. And, and I understand. Fire doubles in size every ninety seconds, so. Okay, it's like Ohm's Law or something like that.
Mm-hmm, thirty.
Candle on, you know, most mattresses these days are, are made of carbon-related materials. So essentially your mattress that you're sleeping on is equivalent to five and a half gallons of gasoline.
Right, and all, and most of construction Montgomeryville is lightweight trust construction, right? My, most, most type five construction. So that's even scarier when collapse times are between seven and seventeen minutes.
No, I, I understand, it's just to get it down to. I mean, when you're waiting, a minute's out, uh, out of question. So I, but I'm just seeing how it could be slid in. Does this work? You know, but what's the impact? Start with five, start with nineteen?
We have, we have, we have seven already.
Okay, well, and, and what was the impact of that?
I, well, when the department was founded in two thousand and two, the township founded it as a combination department.
I, I will see what that, on response times.
I mean, I, I, we were a different fire department. We were Colmar at the time. The township made a decision to hire career staff during the day and to separate themselves from. Colmar Fire Company and start their own fire company.
And is there. I know fires aren't distributed normal, the Poissons distribution, but is there time of day? More likely than other times of day?
Um, for us, our distribution, uh, is really nights and weekends for fires. Um, but that being said, you know, most of the buildings in town are sprinkled. So because of that sprinkler, you know, the, the daytime fires are kind of cut down because of the fact that. Uh, the fire suppression systems are in place. Um, but I would say that, and you know, most of our fires start. From outside in, cigarettes and mulch, um, those types of things, but yeah, our, our distrib, our distribution would show that our, our fires are nights and weekends.
It's kind of like on a national level, that's what I've seen. I work for the largest insurer in the world. We cover more fires than anybody. We don't starve, we just cover. So when we look at things like that, it's like increase the presence when the fires are most likely as opposed to twenty-four seven. And I'm not certain if that's been given any consideration or. It, it probably has.
It's been given a lot of consideration and, you know, in planning for this over the years. We needed to plan for a fire company that is an all-hazards agency and does more than just suppression efforts, right? Because we live in a community where fire education and community risk reduction to me is more paramount than anything else. So I can't give you statistics on fires that never started because of how much work our people have done being ambassadors. For community risk reduction. So, so when you get a firefighter in Montgomery Township, you're not just getting a firefighter. Who's waiting for the alarm to get off. You're getting a firefighter who's doing inspections, he's doing pre-planning, they're training all the time. Those guys are never in the firehouse, they're always out in the truck doing something.
No, I, I understand. We end a company called Heart from Steam Boiler and people took insurance with Heart from Steam Boiler. Not to fix it after the fire, but to have somebody come out and inspect their plant so the fires don't happen.
Right.
I think prevention is a bigger part.
I mean, last year we did over eleven hundred fire inspections. I mean, it's, it's a lot. Thank you.
Do, um, do we ever see a, a discount in our homeowner's insurance if we change from that two to a one?
I don't think it affects homeowner rates. I think it's just business, business fire. Um, it's still, it's still, I mean, some fire departments put their number on their fire trucks, they're so proud of it. Um, I, I'm not, you know, man, I'm not like a big showy type person, I, but Norristown has. ISO rating two on all their fire trucks and chiefs cars, you know, it's a big deal. Um, and it took a lot of work to get there, so we, I mean, we have a great staff, it's, there's no doubt about that.
Chief, you mentioned that, um, other municipalities did this kind of all-in-one versus the phased approach. Um, do you know anywhere, I heard you mention Norristown, but it, and maybe that's the example. Do you know anywhere that attempted to do a phased approach? And how's it going? Number one, and then, and then just with regard to what we're talking about and deciding on tonight. Can it be a two-pronged approach, meaning, um, you know, we still, um. Give the green light to move forward with doing the, um, the, uh. Job descriptions and everything, moving forward to the nineteen employees, but we still, as we're calling it, take our show on the road. So that we get out with the community, because at the end of the day, we're gonna need that information, whether it's voted on to do all nineteen at once or. Um, break it up. But can we do two things at one time, kind of thing?
I, I think to answer your first question with North Hampton and Upper Providence, um, going all in. Um, they're, they've been successful. Um, Upper Mary, um, you know, started day and now they went all in. I think in speaking with my colleagues who are phasing in firefighters and of course they're like me, they would just like to have them all at once. But they'll make it work however they're given, I mean, and, and in the end I work for you, so we'll do whatever you tell me to do, right? I'm just happy to be here. But, but to do it, but to do it the right way, uh, I think is, is to just. Hire them and let's get going and, and, and do what best practices indicate and, and be the best that we can be and, and show. Our residents that, yes, we did raise their taxes, but you are getting a premier service and an essential service, public safety's an essential service. You know, man, I live in town, uh, I want the fire truck there quick too. Um, I pay myself the work sometimes, so, um. On the other hand, I love getting out and seeing community and talking to our community, uh, partners and our friends, I mean. We've tried to host community seminars multiple times, uh, during, uh, the last six years and nobody has shown up. We've had them at the rec center, we've had them at our firehouse. Uh, the only time that, that they're successful, I think, is when we go to HOA meetings like. Like you mentioned, and when we go to the Shammany Falls, but that has taken us, I had to reach out, Marion gave me the email contacts for every HOA. In the township and we sent an email like, hey, we're willing to come out and talk and a couple people followed up, so we happened out, but I, I mean, I'm sure if you're talking tax increase. Everybody will come out, right?
If you say, you know.
But I, I, I have no, if, if I'm allowed to represent the township, which I do every day on this issue, I have no problem. Going out and talking to people. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty passionate about their safety. Uh, and, and I don't want anything bad to happen to my, my neighbors in my community, I mean, uh. The Shammany Falls, when that burnt down, I mean, that, that, I kind of took that personal. I felt like I let them down. I don't know. Uh, what we could have done to change that because of the pre-arrival fire conditions, but, you know, seeing all those people without a clubhouse for over a year. But then being invited to come to their opening ceremony as probably the guy who should have not been there, uh, but anyway, uh. You know, so I have no problem going out and I would be happy to do that. Uh, but I think you're right, I mean, I, I would wanna know. Um, and I would want, if I was a taxpayer, I, I would wanna know why my taxes are being increased and what I'm gonna get for this service.
I'm just, just trying to add on to the whole idea of how do we just get it out there to say, you know what? Without a doubt, whether it's three years or one year, it's a tax increase. And, and but here, here's what. It, it's going towards, here's what it's, you know, going to, um, take care of. I think with knowledge comes understanding and so, you know, if folks un, un, know, okay, yeah, we had. And you mentioned the school district with it. It wasn't until I got more information that I was like, okay. I, I see what they're trying to do here. Initially, I was like, are you kidding me? Because we're impacted too by these increases. We are impacted as well. We don't get a discount or anything, we're impacted as well. So, but it was until I had more information. So that's where I'm saying just a, a two-pronged approach, meaning, let's do that. But then I say, let's still, you know, move forward with, um, the, uh, getting the job descriptions in, in place and, and all that. And that was, we're gonna go there anyway, again, whether it's one year, two year, three year, that's the goal.
And I think, um, as, as, uh, Miss Long could tell you is that public safety felt the same way. They were supportive of the expansion in Public Safety Committee, but they wanted us to do a pretty significant public safety campaign around it. Um, and I'm, I'm ready to start that. I just didn't wanna start anything until obviously I was here in front of you tonight, so. Um, but, but I know the, Carolyn and I.
Sooner they know.
Hi, Eric Pelletier from, uh, one oh three Pemberton Court. Um, I'm an information nerd, so. I read through all your figures and seeing that, seeing the thirty-eight percent tax increase, that's a big number. But for public safety, I would, I'm in support of it, but I think you're gonna be better off having information. If we can spend that time to, to get out there and people want it, want the information, they're gonna come. I mean, I think we're, the public who are here were biased, we're here to getting information, so we're interested in it. But I think the more. You at least make the attempt to get information from residents and see who is impacted, because there's. Conflict, not conflict, there's difference of opinion of five of you, which there should be, this is a difficult issue. We're all for public safety and I think, yeah, I'd rather have a truck in my house in four minutes too. And you've been at my house a couple times, we recovered an oxide detector that was just bad, so I felt bad about that, sorry about that.
That's okay, every day.
But I appreciate that. Yeah, so the more information you have, the better, that's always a good thing. I think it's, it's helpful, as long as we have the time to do that. And explaining it in the simplest terms. This is what it costs to do this, this is what, the, the response times, that's, that's alarming. Here, you know, going from four minutes to ten minutes, but. So as much information as you can give, that's just my two cents, so thank you for all your deliberations and thank you for that information.
I just wanted to add, Vinay, just one second. I just wanted to let everyone know, I just got a text from someone in the Shammany and they said. Oh, but just let them know, we didn't have sprinklers, so don't worry about.
They do now.
So I just wanted you to know, they're all watching and they're, they don't hold you accountable. They still love you though.
So my name is, uh, Vinay Setti, so I live in a wood hollow. Um, I've been a township president, I'm. For most of my life, my dad owned a business here, uh, uh, long ago. Um, I've been with the fire department since two thousand and five. Uh, twenty years this month, actually.
Thank you for those twenty years.
Yeah, no problem. Um, uh, uh, so it's been my pleasure. Um, seeing the department transition from where we were. Um, when I first joined, uh, to where we are today, uh, it's been, it is tremendous. Bill did a lot with the, the career staff, made that transition, um, possible. And incorporated with the volunteers and I made it amazing, you know, um. I do agree that we do need to go to that twenty-four seven, um, uh, uh, twenty-four seven, uh, seventy-two schedule. Um, mainly for the fire potential for the residents. Um, the need is there. Constantly, uh, we are struggling to get members out. Uh, to get volunteers out, to come to calls, to come to trainings. I mean, it's not just the, the firefighter one that you have to go through. It's, we have training every week, uh, sometimes two, three, three times a week. Um, on top of y- your basic firefighter one, um, and stuff like that, but you have events. You have, uh, uh, monthly meetings, you have committee meetings. So an average volunteer may spend an additional twenty hours a week. On top of the forty or fifty hours they put at their full-time job, plus the time with the family. And other sporting events. People aren't able to do that anymore, you know, and it's, it's getting harder to recruit those members in. We are getting the members in, I think we voted in three members in last month. They're all sixteen years old. Okay, it was great because that younger generation is what we need, but when they're eighteen, they're gonna go to college. They may return in the summertime, they may not. They may go a, a, across the country. But then after that, they may go anywhere else, they may not stay in the township. But if they do, they'll only here maybe a year or two before they're going someplace else. Um, Bill talked about a stipend program. Uh, our stipend program goes from ten PM till five thirty AM. Okay, the firefighters are, are either, uh, staying at the firehouse or, uh, they're coming from home as long as they live within four minutes. Um, members are, are, are being, uh, slightly compensated for that, okay? It's fifty dollars, you know, it's nothing too much, but to see the holes. That we have in our stipend schedule at night, uh, to where we're sending emails, at multiple emails a week. To have coverage, to get people to fill in the shift. We're sending text messages out at nine o'clock at night. Hey, you need to shift to ten o'clock, you know?
We filled the shift better when we paid fifteen dollars an hour than now when we pay fifty.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Yeah, we're having so many more holes, so many more people taking, and people are taking the shifts, you know, because they don't wanna leave the crew. Uh, stranded with two or three people, so we have those four people, but there are times where, uh, uh, myself or Adam. Are filling in as a firefighter role to where now we're technically on the truck. And we may, we may respond and meet them at the scene. Um, we're not on the truck. So we're taking out of the command opera, operations because we need to go inside and be with the crew. So that limits the number of, uh, command, command presence on the exterior to do all the other various tasks. Um, a, a, and with that, 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 that schedule of seeing those gaps. Um, and I see it now, it's more so that people are being burnt out. You know, and if we don't make this change sooner than later. I'm afraid of something even worse happening. Um, in the event, and I'm, I don't wanna say it, you know, but if something ever happened down the road, a township resident. Suffer a loss, a fatal loss. And we had the opportunity to make this right now, why wouldn't we? Why would we wait two, three, four years to hire more people? It has to be done. The volunteers will still be here. There's, there's a group of volunteers that I know will stay and will come out. And they will still do the training because they love to do it. I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna do the training, I love to do it. I've been a, I've been a firefighter since nineteen ninety-eight, when I joined when I was sixteen years old. So I've been doing it ever since. I've been a, I've been a firefighter since nineteen ninety-eight, when I joined when I was sixteen years old. So I've been doing it ever since. Um, the, people do want to volunteer, people do want to help out. People will still come out. People will come out and get on the second truck, you know, uh, and people want to be a part of it. But my ultimate fear is if something drastic happens, and then they come back and feel like, well, on this night, you had the chance to make a change and we didn't do anything about it. And we're waiting two, three years for implementing that, um, it, it, it could. In my eyes, it, 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 it just looks bad. So.
Good point. Uh-huh. Thanks for your twenty years and for how much you care.
Uh, Adam Swazlowski, one thirty-nine Polar Drive. Uh, been a volunteer in Montgomery Townships, uh, for probably the past seven years. I think I had my application submitted before I even moved here, uh, because I wanted to get, uh, back into it. But, uh, in Shammany Falls, um, I was the first one there for that fire and we had two people on the truck that showed up for that, for that fire. Um, the truck that was actually able to get water on the fire came from Callmore. Um, so, you know, that, that was five thirty in the morning, uh, between five and five thirty. Uh, so definitely not an ideal situation. Um, you know, it doesn't, fire doesn't pick what time it, it's gonna start. It can happen at any point in time. Um, it doesn't matter if it's five oh one, uh, when the career staff leave. Um, five oh one, we still need to get a crew, a full crew out on a fire truck. Um, but Vinay talks about burnout. I'm pretty close to being burnout. Just the amount of time that we spend here, it's, uh, I have a full-time job during the day. Uh, this is also basically a full-time job based on the timer requirements that it, uh, takes to keep up with the training and the meetings and things like that. So with that said, um, I think twenty-four seven is ideal, ideally the way to go, like immediately, like as soon as possible. Uh, the, I used to do the stipend kind of schedule prior to Bill. Um, at the end of twenty twenty-four, we may have had like one to two holes per month. Uh, we average like one to two holes per day now, trying to get the volunteers to pick up the stipend shifts. Um, so it's just, the whole thing is just getting more and more difficult to accomplish. So that was all. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Thanks for your seven years. And thanks for your comments from within. You know, Bill can tell us one thing as director, but it's nice to hear from some others that are, are within and, and seeing the holes and, and working. So appreciate that very much.
And live in the township.
Correct.
Okay, so what's our, what's our, what do you need from us tonight, Bill?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn that to the, to the, to the boss.
So what we're looking for tonight is not a vote. We're looking for consensus to move forward because budget, believe it or not, is gonna be coming up. I mean, summers when we start talking capital, when we start talking, that's why we're talking about the feasibility study. Um, we are looking that we can put these numbers into the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. And obviously with tonight, what was being said, the caveat that we come up with a plan to begin public outreach in whatever forms that's gonna look like, whether it's posts on Facebook, um, our podcast, our e-news, you know, putting data. I believe Mr. Guy, Mr., one, one of the residents said about putting it in, um, a form that people can understand. So like, I don't wanna, I don't want to hit them with, the NFPA numbers are good to have to say, this is the standard. So we have, one of the things that the board wanted to see when we got here was to become the gold standard again. We want to be the community that other people look at and say, well, come Montgomery's getting it done. And I know you all hear about it like from our public information side. I hear about it from the police side. You know, we had commendations tonight. So we will commit that. We will come up with a plan. We have great public information staff to help us. Um, but we have the connections. One of the things that, you know, the board asked when I got here was that we reconnect with the community, whether it's through the Chamber of Commerce, um, I'm on the V M S C board. There's, there's a reason for that. It's not because I have a lot of free time. It's because these connections matter. These connections, when something like this happens, matter to be able to get out in front of HOAs. I mean, we have so many HOAs and they want us to come to meetings and I go at night because they want to hear what's going on in the township. So those same connections, I can say, can you please reach out to your people and put this communication out to them? And that we're gonna have a meeting here at the township building or, you know, to reach out to the Shammany Falls and say, we want to use your brand new community building, which we all thought was wonderful and is now fully sprinkler. Um, we want to come and we want to talk to people. But we want to know, do we move forward with this for twenty twenty-six? Do we stall it? Do we scrap it? We just need to know what we're doing.
Well, the information, um, the information sessions are gonna give you the opportunity to get feedback from the community as well. It's not just a one-way communication.
Absolutely.
So why wouldn't we then, you know, take that feedback into consideration in terms of which direction to go?
We can. It's just, this is a tough decision and this is tasked to the board. You know, like, this isn't just a decision about do we or don't we put pickleball in a park. This is public safety and, you know, maybe it's because I've been around it for so long, but I, you know, I've become sort of, where was I? I was in Bucks County. It was all about open space. Here, emergency services has become my sort of mantle and I want to make sure we do this right. So we can certainly gather the information and, you know, if meetings that you're not at, we can report back to the board. But ultimately, you know, come September, we need to have some direction so that we know what we're doing for budget.
Light to at least put the numbers in for the budget.
I think we have consensus that we want, we, we recognize the need to go, you know, ultimately to the twenty-four seven. I, 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 I'm not, I don't mean to speak for anybody else here. We have consensus. It's just the timing and, um, whether or not it can be phased, um, to ease the burden on, um, our, our residents.
Then I think that's a discussion I need to have with Bill first, to say, if, if in fact, the consensus comes back from residents and ultimately the board to phase it, how's he gonna do it and can he do it? Because it's, it's one thing to say our, our weekends are a weakness, but we're not gonna be able to hire full-time firefighters and say, oh, by the way, your permanent schedule is you're always working Saturday and Sunday. They're not gonna take the job here.
I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, I don't think we should phase it in. He's given us the plan that he wants that gets us from over nine minutes to under five minutes. Two people that are within his operation, organization are telling us, the residents here, this is what needs to be done. I, I honestly, let's put the word out, but I don't know a resident out there that's gonna say, oh yeah, sign me up for nine minutes. I, I just don't.
And I, I think my only, what I'm hearing from, uh, chief and, and, um, the two volunteers is that, uh, more so from chief though, that the, you, you don't think the phased approach will work.
I, I mean, the most, the, the phase, crew integrity is the most important thing in the fire service, right? Crew integrity, that's what we're all training, crew integrity. And that's, it's like, it's like a sports team. You're going in a burning building, everybody's gotta trust each other. Everybody's gotta know everybody's move. People need to predict each other's move. People need to know that people's strengths and weaknesses. If you allow me to do the twenty-four, you know, the twenty-four seventy-twos with the four platoons at this time, we are creating that team cohesion. That's, that's amazing. If I'm, if, if you're telling me we gotta phase it, I'll do it. It's, it's, that's what you tell me to do. That's what I do. But, but then I worry about the same people aren't working together. Why our career staff is so good is because they work together every day. They know each other in and out. They're like that, that sports team that wins championships. We talked about stipend, when Vinay and I were doing stipend fifteen years ago, I was always Sunday nights. I knew my crew every Sunday night. It was the same, and Vinay was the same way. Now, we're like stipend mercenaries. We're just trying to get anybody to fill holes and those people aren't working together. The fire service isn't really something where you can just show up and say, completed training, I get on the truck. Everybody has to have a job. Everybody has to fill that up. We do so much training on crew integrity, knowing your riding position on the truck, knowing strengths and weaknesses. And, and that's what I think will be best for us. And that's why I think not phasing it, but coming right out of the gate and building these team cohesions, just like a police squad, where these guys who are now in an environment that is dangerous, that is smoky, that is hot, that is lights out, can work together and know each other, every move, can predict each other's move. I mean, crew resource management is one of the major things and Vinay works for the fire school. He could tell you how much influence or impactfulness crew resource management is having, but how much time we're spending even on the teaching side, teaching people about crew resource management. So the more you know your team, the better you're gonna, the better your outcomes are gonna be.
People's homes are the most important thing they have. It's their retirement. It's, it's everything they have. It's the biggest financial decision and thing they have. Their, their families, their pets. I, again, I, I, I don't know who would say, no, get to me slower. Um, I think on this, I, I will not vote to do it in a phased, um.
I think that having eight or nine additional members, full-time members will have an impact. And I think that our staff has the, the talent and creativity to do that and, and protect our community effectively. And ultimately, we will get to that twenty-four seven staffing. I mean, so, you know, we're not saying that we're not going to provide it long-term. It's just taking a phased approach. It's also easier to implement. And there's no full-time H R person included in this plan, which I think is a mistake. I think that's a huge burden that we're putting on our H R staff. And these are people who are going to have to feel, um, you know, grievances and complaints. And that is not something that I think an H R intern is really equipped to.
We have a H R professional.
We have one and you're increasing the burden on that person.
Or no, there's one specifically for the fire department.
Well, she, the intern is, the intern was solely to work on this project, to update job descriptions, to create job descriptions, to get things ready so that when we go to testing, when we go to hire, we're in place. Um, Chris Willard is our full-time H R manager. She handles, and, um, knock wood, um, again, with the culture, um, we haven't had any grievances since we've been here. But you're. If you look at our labor attorney bill, it's.
We have a hundred employees right now, full-time employees in the townships. And so you're increasing staff by twenty percent and you don't think you need additional resources in human resources to handle that additional workflow? I just don't think that's realistic. I really don't think that's realistic.
Okay, I'm all for the, uh, information out there. Let's make sure. We've always talked about communication to our public, but I'm not up for phasing. I say, let's, let's do what the professionals are telling us to. Let's do what has been proven already in other departments to work.
Does anyone here want to have a fire next year when we're on the phase in? And our response time maybe is eight minutes? Unless.
I don't. I mean, he's talking minutes that save lives, save pets, save your home from complete disaster. In four minutes, they can get there and save your home and your photo albums and your christening dress that's hanging in your closet. You know, like, those are the things that people don't think about until they've been in a fire and have lost those things. I think it has to be all, all at once. And if Carolyn feels that she needs to hire another H R person to deal with this, well, then that's one more salary and it's not gonna be that big of a bump when we're already taking a tax increase. Would it be feasible for us to have two options for them to, whoops, that's my phone, um, two options for people to assess? My husband's probably wondering where I am. Sorry about that. Um, would it be feasible for us to have two different options? Whoops, he's calling back again. I'm sorry. Would it be feasible for us to have two different options for us to assess? You know, have it, have a phased-in option as well as that. So that way, when we're going to these informational, um, uh, events, that we'd be able to put those two things in front of people and say, well, what, what would you like? At least they would have the option to see.
Their decision. I, I, and what I mean by that, what I mean by that is that we, I'm saying, I'm thinking we just need to get the information out because this is what we are planning to do. Um, so, you know, that, that's the, that's the, that's what the goal should be. The information session should be just that. This is to share with you why there will be a tax increase. Unfortunately, you know, we already know that's gonna occur again, whether it's in one year or one, two year, one, two and three. Um, we need to get that information out. I, I don't think we should go into a meeting and say, here's your two choices and you decide what should be done because it's Bill as the, you know, our, our chief that is sharing with us. This is what he, he needs in order to make sure we have the safety within our township.
And we are here to keep the residents and the businesses safe.
And we're also here to represent their needs financially. And this, yeah, this does have a financial impact on.
All of us.
And, and many of, uh, and many of whom are on fixed incomes and lower, lower socioeconomic. Yes, we are overall an affluent township, but we heard directly from residents who are very concerned about the impact and whether or not they're gonna have to choose whether or not to pay their tax bill or buy their, um, their prescription medications. So this is, you know, I just think that if we can make this a little financially easier and still arrive at the same destination, um, that we should give more serious consideration to that. Or at least, you know, could we push back and say, let's not make a decision right now? And could you come back and present us with a scenario that might be workable? And I think that's a lot to ask, given what we're asking of the entire community. Ivanay.
I just wanted to add one more thing. Uh, um, uh, just going, giving everything, I do understand the whole, the, the whole financial burden and, and all that. Uh, trust me, I do. Um, uh, to try to, for me personally, to try to transition it to ha, ha, uh, staggering it out by hiring over the number of years, um, just in over, just from me thinking financial overtime cost are gonna be out.
Paid another way.
Way over what you expect, uh, because it's gonna start off Saturday, Sunday. And then it's gonna be, okay, some nights and stuff like that. Our stipend shift starts at ten P M. Career staff ends at five P M. Sometimes we can be, that five to seven is a hard time. We may not get, when the chiefs are usually around, our chief's shift starts at six. It goes from six to six. Um, but it's hard to get a truck out between that time. But if the crew doesn't get to the station till ten P M, that's five hours now that there's, might not be a truck to get out. You know, and now, do you want to see North Penn Fire Company, Callmark Fire Company, Hilltown Fire Company putting a fire out at your house? That the taxpayers are paying and they're seeing other departments come out. The first in truck to put the fire out. Um, earlier you had mentioned about people, uh, uh, people coming back to the township, if you do stagger it. Um, there are so many departments now that are hiring and those jobs are filling up so quickly. Um, years ago, when I applied to, to, to become a career firefighter, you'd have a hundred people or more show up for these testings. Okay, I tested in Norristown, um, back in the early two thousands. There, there was close to fifty or sixty people. When I was doing the testings, when I worked at Bucks County Community College, fifteen to twenty. You know, the number of people have drastically dropped for applying. And if we keep on waiting, tho- that number's gonna also continue to drop as well. One of our members went to, um, Myrtle Beach Fire Department, got a job down there. All they ask is that you have firefighter one, firefighter two, E M T. You didn't need to be a paid firefighter somewhere else. You can be a volunteer, come in with those three classes, do the testing real quick and then do three weeks of on-the-job training. And you're a Myrtle Beach, this is City of Myrtle Beach firefighter. And now, so we're training all these people and they're all gonna leave and not gonna have anyone to come and come back. If you're living in Myrtle Beach, you, you want to come back to Montgomery Township for another job to be a firefighter?
So, so just to clarify, again, I'm not saying, um, I'm not supportive of, uh, this move. Uh, what I'm saying is that, yes, I think that we should, we should evaluate phasing. What I'm saying is that, yes, I think that we should, we should evaluate phasing it. And I'd love to see those numbers. If you think that's gonna cost, you know, like overtime and that maybe there isn't really as much of a differential in terms of the overall financial impact, I would love to see those numbers to be able to, to make, you know, a sound decision. But in terms of, you know, the salary that we're proposing too, I, I, I use my contacts at Monka Works to do some salary comparisons. And we're going to be offering a very competitive wage. So I think that's also going to factor in to our ability to recruit. And I'll share this with everybody on here so that you have access to it. But, you know, the, the salaries that we have outlined in here are, are going to help us recruit effectively to fill these roles, whether it's in year one or year two or maybe year three. So I, I, I do think that we'll be well-positioned, you know, to recruit effectively.
Well, I will say one more time, I do not wanna be the person sitting on the board when we get the complaint from someone who had a fire in year one or two when we could have put this plan in place on day one. There's gonna be someone that will look back at this and feel that we did not serve our residents. I don't wanna be that person. I want a full, complete department if something happens to my home, any of my clients who have moved here, any of my family, my friends, anyone on the board, any of us sitting in here.
As another option for people that do have financial issues, we could possibly consider some sort of rebate program, which they do for the school, school taxes, things like that. I'm just trying to come up with an idea of that would make, make it feasible, feasible for people that truly can't afford. That maybe they would be willing to do five or ten dollars, but they can't do thirty or whatever it is per month. I'm, I'm, John, you're saying you can't do that?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any, under the Tax Enabling Act, to just come up with a tax rebate program, unless there's a certain program run for specific instance through the Commonwealth. I, I don't think you'd be able to come up.
Okay, I wasn't sure if maybe just for fire services. We may, there may have to be something like that, that's brought, you know, maybe we would be the first in the, in the Commonwealth. But the issue being is that this is, this is not something that's unique to Montgomery Township. Fire service issues are probably the top conversation that happened at our, our statewide meeting last month. And this is something that people are coming up with, well, how can we have regional coverage or mutual aid? Like, they're coming up with, because they truly, it's a collapsing industry and because the time has changed. And that's why we need to spread the, the information that what was happening in the, even ten, fifteen years ago is not what we have right now in terms of volunteers for, and, and aren't we lucky that we live in a great community that has services, but it, we can't keep this up at the rate, at the rate we're going. So this is where we need to know, Vinay, you just talked about overtime. That is something like, when you're calculating what the costs are, we need to put those things on the table so everyone understands that we have to do something drastic. And maybe it's one year, maybe it's two years, but the issue being is that we can't, we will not be able to provide the services needed as is right now. So this is a crisis throughout the state and the country. And we are not alone in this, but we do need to make some really significant changes. But information is what people need because they don't know what we know. Like, we all here are now learning along what you've been able to provide us and I still don't know enough. That's why I think this information is so critical to get out. So people don't say, oh, look what they're doing in Montgomery, that's excessive. And, and maybe come up with some, some creative ways to make it easier for people that truly will have partnerships with that.
And I do think, and I do think that the information piece of it is huge to get out, but I, I think it's a two-pronged approach. We still move forward, but we get the information out at the same time. Because we know this is where we need to move to. We know that, that's what we already know, that's a fact.
Yes.
Chief has already agree, has, has proven it to be a fact. I mean, what the information they have provided is clear to me that we've gotta do something different. Ten minutes does not work. That does not work. So, you know, if this is the answer, I'm not saying if, to me, this is the answer. This is the answer, it's just a matter of when. And so sooner rather than later, sounds a little better in that. And then we, we work on, we collectively board and with Chief, with every, and we get it out. Talk it up with everyone, hey, yes, our taxes are gonna go up, but here's why.
And start with the taxes are going up, then people will come. They wanna know, they'll, they'll say, we'll be able to provide them the information.
Yeah, it wouldn't even be, I, I think that would be, if you open up or, or put it out on Facebook and say, we're having an information meeting on why our taxes are about to increase. That alone is gonna make me, I would've walked in. I mean, that was the thing with the school board. I, initially, I have no children, so I, that, that wasn't as important for me. But once I had more information, it then, okay, I see what they're trying to do here. This is for, you know, the, the other children, all we have, other children in our, and, you know, children down the line. So, um, safety, how, how do you measure, put a financial price on safety or when you do it? How do, how do you do that?
You can't.
I think you can, actually. And I, I think that that's what we have to talk, we have to talk the numbers and what, what the impact is about delaying response, what happens.
I think we've been lucky.
Yeah.
I think we've been very lucky. And so honestly, until, you know, all of this information being shared months ago and that this was coming along, I, I don't know that I knew. I mean, you know, I know I didn't know that, you know, we were kind of really, we've got two folks sitting here saying, I'm tired.
Yeah, and there's holes in the schedule.
And there's holes that they try to figure out, that's, that's weighing heavy on me.
Yeah.
And the holes are safety issues at the end of the day.
And I think.
And for our own people, for our own fire department, that becomes an issue of safety for them that are working the fires then as well.
Truly. So Bill, what happens if we do nothing? And this takes another year to get implemented?
What he's been doing.
I mean, we've been band-aiding it for twenty years. I just think that it's getting a lot worse. I mean, there, every, throughout, throughout, I guess, Vinay and I's, we've been here a long time. It's, it's eb and flows, sometimes we do, I mean, there were weekends when it was only two people around the whole weekend, you know? And, but it's not, it always came back. It's, hasn't come back and it's just significantly decreasing. And I, I can't get it to come back. And I've been able to, not, to kinda analogy, give it CPR and it's good for a little bit. And we've tried everything, I mean, federal grants, local stuff, we're still working with the school district. But we're paying people to come to calls, we're paying people to get training, they still don't care. Like, they just wanna come when it's convenient for them. And unfortunately, you know, our fires, he asked when our fires was, we had a fire during a Friday night Phillies playoff game. You know, like, the fire doesn't care that the Phillies are in the playoffs, the fires don't care that we don't have good coverage. I mean, I, I wouldn't have referred to the Shammany Falls fire, but Adam did. We wouldn't have even had a truck there if John Schuyer didn't come in to work early that day. We had two people on the first-out engine on squad eighteen, it was a volunteer who couldn't drive and John. If John didn't come in to work at four forty-five every day, we would have nobody around from the time the duty chief gets off at six to the time the career staff get in at seven. Nobody, I mean, if.
And even though they, they lost their entire structure, thank you God, nobody was in that building.
I mean, Adam and I got there first and I went in because we were worried somebody was in the gym because the door was unlocked. But again, like, crew resource, two in, two out, none of that existed in the first forever minute. And really, the saving grace, the way Callmar and Lanzo got there so quickly was that they were already out on the street on another call. If they had to come from their house to get in the truck to come to Montgomery Township, I mean, the results wouldn't have changed, there's nothing left. But, you know, I, I don't know if, in that case, saying that our response had an impact. Because looking at the videos, interviewing people who said they smelled smoke eight-thirty the night before, looking at the police videos of, and when Adam got there, you were the first arriving chief, you reported smoke and, and the attic space was open, it was all wood. I don't know, in that case, I think, but, but like you said, we got lucky. If that was somebody's house, I mean, we had a fire on July fifth and the kids brought fireworks into the home and burned a hole, remember that night, burned the stairwell? They were all in the basement and they burned the stair landing. And they put a hole between where they could get out of the basement. I mean, if that happened this weekend, I, I, I don't know if we, it wouldn't be good. It wouldn't be good.
Enough said. Thanks for all this time.
Thank you, thanks for hearing me.